Alright, so any other questions about the circulation report? If not, we'll move on to the financials. And the actual, so you get the check registry first or the detail. And on page 12 is where the actual financials start, or the balance sheet starts. It's always a good thing that we have carryover into the new fiscal year because it's a month where you actually have money in the bank.
And I did the math and we got enough.
Because that's always a concern. We have that concern as well at the visitor center, visitor convention barrow. So it's good that we have enough. When's the first?
That comes in November. Usually because taxes are due November 15th. And we usually get one fairly quickly after that. So weekish or so after that. Yeah, so that'll look better, much better.
No, I mean, it doesn't look bad.
No, it doesn't look bad now, but it certainly will look better. Especially by November.
Right. Yeah, it's, you know, the personnel services takes up the biggest chunk of it. A bidding of cash over or carryover. Any questions for Sammy about the monthly financial report, the detailed ledger? And then we'll get to the memorial.
I do have page 13.
Of the report or of the detailed ledger?
It's on page 13 of the whole thing. But that's the second page of the balance sheet.
Gotcha.
ESO administration rent, is that a software?
No, that is the office space we've run out for the extended service office.
Oh, okay.
That's revenue.
Yeah, yeah. That's right. It wasn't making any sense because I looked it up and that's all I could come up with was software. Oh, and so that's not bad.
I have a question on page 15, the building and ground maintenance. I was wondering of that budgeted $50,000, is that for to cover incidentals? Or do we have a plan? I mean, there's lots of things that need done.
That's our outdoor, the shrubs and leaf removal and.
Landscapes.
Landscape.
So not building repair?
A few little bits here and there. But most, we have a line item with the city too for repairs like if a toilet goes out or sink falls off the wall.
$50,000 sounds like a lot for mowing lawn, I mean for mowing shrubs.
Well, he's what, two hundred, three, $300 a month? So that's covered that. And then mine, we spent $4,300 in August. So there had been something.
I'll have to look at the detailed ledger and see.
And might have been the electrician.
As I recall, it was grass, especially on that side. It was replaced by rock in the last year.
It was not grass.
Well, it was dirt. Has it helped at all?
Well, we have a lot of people sleeping.
And my mom, it was being garbage.
Garbage.
Getting caught in all the bushes and all sorts of, it just was.
It looks so much better.
It does, it looks really nice now.
So there's no specific plan for that money? It's just, it's there for?
It's there for.
Grounds maintenance.
Grounds maintenance and for some, like, we have to have some light fixture replaced, for instance.
BAE comes out.
Oh, BAE comes out, oh, there it goes.
Cleaning, that's where most of the ghosts are.
Cleaning services.
Oh, the cleaning crew.
The trash over, you're right.
No, it's always been there.
So that's a bulk of it.
But major repairs to this building are under the city.
Right. Sure.
Like the facilities.
The roof is under the city, for instance.
Sure.
Do you know, I keep forgetting to say, a few times that I've used the ladies' room up here, one of the sinks, the water pressure is blast your hands off. Do you know if that's been adjusted?
Yeah, the lobby bathroom, it's the ladies' room. I think it's left.
Probably missing the.
The governor's whatever screen.
The thing that makes it.
Definitely a good time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't used it lately, so I don't know if it's.
I think it's.
But every time I use it, it's like, whoa.
You'd like skin us to be honest, yeah.
Who's the other saying?
That was a question I had. Anybody else have a question about the financials? Then we'll move on to the memorial fund, which begins on page 18. And we have still a nice healthy balance in that, almost 85,000. A lot of it, of course, dispersments go to the fridge, which is really great. And we're still having a lot of people coming through and getting food. Which is good. We need people getting healthy food. As opposed to, you get the. Any questions about the memorial fund? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
They're moved.
Have a motion as second to approve the treasurer's report as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Well, here, so let's pick. Thank you. Any correspondence?
Uh, no, there was no correspondence. If we pop on that, there was the question last time of being able to contact board members. And there is actually underneath your board names, there is a form there to fill out, which will shoot you in from, you know, somebody inquisitors or something. So we did just put the emails up there because all you get is, you know, a bridge to buy, et cetera. So there is a form there though, if somebody wants to contact the board. But I apologize for forgetting it was there when it was discussed last.
Were you able to get an answer if there's some notification saves?
I asked IT and they're looking into it.
Oh, that sucks, okay. Because I don't look at that every day. My board email.
But yeah, it's on a whole different device for me. And so I predict sometimes to even open it. So I'm glad that sometimes Sammy sends me a nudge. You have an email? Okay. Kind of yucky outside too, so.
I have several questions on the library report.
Okay.
Just because I don't know, what goes into the teen wellness kits?
It varies each month. They share a theme each month. And so she'll put anything. Hello? Are you there Jenny?
He gets voicemail.
Just call your phone call's number. So like one month she did journaling. And so she put a little journal in there, like a pen and also stickers to decorate the journal and that stuff.
Okay, and then the, I just noticed that the tech and the men's group, seems like the participation in that has gone up.
Yeah, I hadn't. The tech one-on-ones, is that what you? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that varies month to month depending on what people need.
But I'm glad to see you. Questions and it was kind of cool to see the men's group. Then I wanted to know what the miniature contest was.
Oh, they painted little D and D figures. And everybody got to vote on what the best one was and runner-up most popular, you know, greatest. Yeah, he's a big hit.
And then proctoring, is that a class or is that, are we offering that as a service?
It's a service we offer.
So, okay.
What do we proctor? Do we examine them as a?
Exactly, yeah.
Nice, cool.
That is. Is that paid service? Like, do we get paid to?
No. We just work like SWOOP. Just a lot of SWOOP classes, some. We have some other out-of-state universities, people are taking online and they have to have a prompted test, so.
And there were 18 people who wanted the sole needs to. Yeah, we're very happy to have more of those guides at the visitor center to hand out with all the routes and such.
Thank you for supporting that now.
You're welcome.
Before we get away from, like, did you have one question?
Well, just a comment, as it seems like, like the drop-offs at Eastside and Empire, that seems substantially more than what I would ever see. Didn't know if that was related to ours. You know, school about to start.
Those just very, we do obviously better during the school year because, or in the summer.
Kids need books.
The weather's better.
So, yeah, the wind took the library's boots at the farmer's market today.
Took what?
Took the, the library's boots. The wind.
Wasn't the library? She had books and all kinds of stickers.
There's a few different organizations.
I thought it was a library. I was like, well, I can say, oh, my library.
Yeah, we have some very good weights that hold our stuff.
You have reached the maximum time permitted for recording your message. If you're satisfied with the message, press one. To listen to your message, press two. To erase and re-record, press three.
Jenny's getting really long.
If you're satisfied with the message, press one. To listen to your message.
We don't even have to answer that.
Sorry. Technology don't. The teen wellness, it reminded me, is it usually the same group of teens each?
We don't monitor their identities, so.
Okay, so, okay.
I know we get some repeats.
Okay.
But I recognize them.
And how does the word get out about that one? Is there anything other than the normal channels?
Not really. Word of mouth.
Yeah.
Is the biggest, most successful of it.
Is there still someone doing social media? I know that a couple of months ago, there was talk of someone like being dedicated towards.
So we've had somebody dedicated for, I don't know, 100 years back. Emily works 32 hours and probably 20 should have, I suspect. With social media. Well, I know the other day she posted like 20 things back to back. Because I follow you and it was like, oh, there's a lot.
The other question I had was on the community fridge. I, I have friends who woman the fridge or man the fridge. And it seemed like there were some days where it was like, oh my goodness, so many more people. Is the, the way the statistics are counted, are you able to see like every day and see like if there's a peak? Not necessarily a day of the week, but it was like, the thought was, ooh, was there something that happened with the SNAP benefits or something like that that triggered all this?
They come out on Wednesdays because they know aftermarket we get leftovers.
Yes.
I can tell you why some of it.
Yeah.
They peak on certain days because people figure out when deliveries are.
This would happen to be a Thursday. And it didn't seem to be coinciding with anything. And it was just mobbed at the fridge that day. I don't know, I don't think there's any way to be.
Maybe the peaches were extra delicious.
There is some of that because people will come in and say, hey, my friend called me and told me you had peaches. And so I came down to get peaches.
And just, you know, something like if something does have the SNAP benefits and then we would not to expect, not that there can be any more food there because.
Yeah, that's the part that's just, yeah. There's not necessarily more food to provide, so. Because they're getting cut too.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want to this time ask about the Hoopla and Libby?
Oh, sure, yeah, it's part of the report. I wanted to just ask some clarifying questions about the difference between Libby and Hoopla. And just in general. And I was looking through our reports and it looks like the monthly summary that tracks Hoopla but not Libby. The librarians report tracks both and digital circulation tracks Hoopla but not Libby.
We only track Hoopla here because we have Hoopla. Libby is countywide. So I report, that's why I report the countywide statistics on Libby. That's divvied up at the end of the year by a formula. And the difference between the two is that Libby is a statewide consortium that we buy into as a countywide level. And it has different lending models within it. Most of them are one-on-one, like, much like a book is sitting on the shelf. If a person comes in and takes it, it's gone, that we else could have it. And you have to put a hole on it and wait. We have, on our county level, we not only subscribe to the consortium, but we also have a, basically a local collection that we also buy. If stuff is super popular, we as a county level will buy a copy also that is just available for people in Coos County.
Through Libby.
Through Libby. So if, I don't know, book XYZ has 8,000 holds on it and we buy an extra copy for our level. Our peoples, if they're 35 on this list, they may become number one on the local list. So it's a way to offset that wait time. Hoopla operates on a different, Hoopla we subscribe to as an individual library, just us. And that's why it's only available to people in, with the Coos Bay and Allegheny zip codes. And so that.
And the library part.
Wait, and a library. But that operates at a different lending model where if all of us wanted to read the same book at once, we'd get all the one and check out that book at once.
So that's an ebook, not an audiobook.
It has both. And it also has graphic novels, music, television and movies.
Okay, so Hoopla, you can do audiobooks through?
You can do audiobooks through both.
Okay.
I'm talking to you, but sure is.
Our use.
Something not actually referring.
Yeah, our use of audiobooks on there far surpasses any other form.
And I've found that there are things on Libby that are not.
Right.
I found, I was trying to just fiddle around and see different.
Yeah. For eight weeks on Libby is because it's not available on Hoopla.
I haven't so far found anything on Hoopla that, I mean, everything, I look in, I'm looking both and I've only ever found the books that I want. So I wasn't sure what Hoopla.
It's, they just have different agreements with different publishers, so.
That's helpful, thank you.
We are starting to look at Blackstone Audio as an either a replacement slash additional option. And they'll have, they have just audiobooks there. But they have some of the real big name authors also.
What would it be a replacement for, Libby or Hoopla?
Probably Hoopla. Hoopla is an out-of-control money machine. It can be. And so we're sort of waiting, and since vast majority of people use Libby, or not Libby, I'm sorry, Hoopla for audiobooks. Yeah, because there, that's the, each book that's checked out from their costs, the library. And so, which is also why there's a limit on how many you can have. And more and more people. More and more people, it's more, it, it's just, it could turn into a giant money pit.
Hello?
Hi, yay! You found us, we found you.
Oh, my gosh. Sorry about that, I don't know, I turned my phone off and on again, I thought that might be what.
We're just discussing Hoopla versus Libby.
So I'm interested to hear how, financially, how that would affect us. I mean, if it costs the library money every time I go in and borrow an audiobook from Hoopla, is that just an unlimited money pit? I mean.
No, that's why there are limits on it. I can place limits on it, that's why people can only have six a month.
Okay.
In an ideal world, it's, we throw it open. But we limit the amount you can have each month. And I have had to go in, there's different price points within their plan. And so I did have to remove the highest price items because, and unfortunately, that's probably what you're looking for.
So this other provider is?
It's a flat fee.
Okay.
You just pay one fee and you can use the heck out of it.
Aren't they in Southern Oregon?
Yeah, they're based in Ashland.
Yeah.
The Blackstones?
Blackstone.
But they only have audio?
They only have audio. We couldn't video.
From Libby, you know, they have.
I don't know, we're looking, that's why we're looking around before we make any moves on it. We're getting all of our ducks in a row to see what might be. So, but, you know, it's very clear that ebooks are, ebooks and the audio, you know, they're popular. But we can't have them break the library. It's a balancing act. And, you know, a lot of libraries have already moved away from Hoopla just because the pricing model is just, it gets too much.
Okay, thank you. Interesting information.
I'm curious, when we were talking about Libby, since it's tied to a library card, is it possible to get just Coos Bay numbers instead of county numbers?
No, that's the unfortunate part. Though when our library cards were set up ages and ages and ages ago, what should have happened is a link, they all start with the same numbers. And they should have been changed for each library. Each library should have had its own.
A unique number.
It didn't. So a lot of things we can't pull out because we can't tell.
Is that like a county issue then? Like, could the county library board change your policy to make it so each library had their own?
We would have to reissue all.
Could it start with like that? Because we only have this one, whatever, two years, you're supposed to get a new card?
No, you don't get a new card, you just update your information.
Yeah, mine expired.
Yep, on your birthday. Was Libby or Hoopla and they were like, oh, yeah, well, what's your?
It's getting better, we're able to.
You expire.
People read it that way, it doesn't actually say that, but it looks like it said that. You didn't expire.
On current, yeah.
It's getting the same numbers. As technology is advancing more and more, we're able to differentiate a little more sometimes. Like, when we started with Hoopla, I'm able to go by zip code instead of card number. But not all vendors are set up yet to differentiate like that. So, this, we're slowly getting there.
Okay, and we still have a lot of people using the rooms.
Oh, yes.
150 people.
Okay, so the statistical data, I, I found it interesting. I mean, we started up really high on the community fridge and then it dropped off in one month. But we started up so high, so I guess that was a correction. And then the number of programs went way up. The next, the next slide, so. It was really good to see. And the attendance went up a lot.
And, back to my list from last month. Crystal did some deep diving and investigating, we got our software all updated. And we might be able to give you your dream stats. Maybe, don't get too excited, yeah, we're still on that, it's there. You can see us hour by hour.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to figure it out, we're working through a gathering. Yes, there's not enough data. I think we can get you there, so.
All right, any other questions about any of the statistical graphs?
I think it's checked out, looks like less than the other years that are only wrapped so far this year. Other than the specific reason?
No, these are just some things that just always ebb and flow that.
I am curious, on that graph, was that page 28? I just noticed the dots are different colors and I'm wondering if they could be like the others. Or it's like one single color.
Which graphic?
Uh, page 28, I didn't check out it.
Oh, the, the plotting points are different colors. Is that what you mean?
Yep.
Good eye, I missed that.
Me too.
We'll write that, I need to grab some water. Unfortunately, it's a lot of county.
Hey, we have good water finds.
Amazing that the chairs have a chance to cool off. As hot as this room is used, it's kind of amazing.
Thank you. So there were other comments about the circulation and graphics? All right, so we will move on to the Friends of the Library report.
Okay, you have a, you have a notification of our next book sale, which is, all right, next book? Anyway.
Two weeks, right?
Yeah, it's the fourth.
Yeah, four and five.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
There's not much, thanks. Got a lot of, got a lot to do for now.
Well, this is true, and it would be a normal book sale. The book sale that we had in September, which was just a kind of a, let's get rid of things, dollar bag in the Myrtlewood Room and $10 in here. Brought in $494. I think they sold over 300 bags of books. So it helped. But if you look at our. So it helped, but if you look in our book storage room, you'll find that it's to the ceiling again. So it's a good thing that we are having another one soon. Um, September starts a new year for the Friends. So I have a total here of what we did last year. The bookstore made six thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. And book sales brought in six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. And probably those pennies are, yeah. But giving us a total of income for the physical, being the store and the book sales here, twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Really good.
So, we feel good about that, but of course, we, like everybody else, we want to see it get bigger and get back to where we were when we were making eighteen thousand instead of twelve thousand.
Yeah.
So.
It's been a nice number. Still a giant.
Yep.
For sure.
Yeah.
Anything else? Foundation report.
Um, Janice came and was gratefully welcomed to our group and she knew a couple of us already and got to enjoy some cookies. Um, which is a nice perk of our meetings. We received a final estate bequest from our major benefactor, Mr. Surless, his estate has now been finally dispersed and so the remainder of fifty thousand dollars came to us and will be put in a CD designated for the new library. Because that was his, that was his wish of how his bequest be used. Um, we, um, Sammy asked HGE architect Joe Slack to come and take a look at the staff workroom to see if it could be made more effective for staff to be able to move around in there. Right now it's just kind of these huge barriers that are beautiful, but really kind of impede work. And he thought for the announced budget of a hundred thousand dollars, that would be doable and is at work coming up with a, a plan. And the stuff that is provided should be portable, movable to a new library facility, which is another benefit of doing this. Um, we sent out an annual appeal letter, some of you may have been happy recipients of same and have already received over forty-four hundred dollars in contributions coming directly from that. Um, we elected officers and it seems to be exactly the same officers we've had before. Yes, we didn't change a whole. And our representatives for the steering committee were told to stand by that they would be, the steering committee would be re-upping soon, so.
It should have been, it's like next week, right?
So that's really soon.
Who are the officers?
Uh, the foundation, Kurt Benward is the president, Susan Anderson is the vice president, Laura Fisher is a goddess and is our treasurer, and I am the secretary.
Anybody think of anything else who came that evening? Okay. All right. And yes, the steering committee is-
Twenty-third.
On the twenty-third. All right, so old business. We are at the Oregon Public Library Standards, which I thought we were filling out because it had to go somewhere. But apparently it's just for staffs have another, they're doing it.
Well, staff and board.
And the first time. It's just a lot of pages.
It is.
Well, you know, I'm just running out of paper now, you've been through policies, you know how this works.
I love solving the problems.
So, I see that some of our board members, that I have in, as you wanted to say-
No, I was just gonna ask in the news.
Which page were you going to be on?
Starting on page twenty-four is the one I'm on.
Yeah, we're gonna slide.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-two.
At the pack, yeah. We're gonna do, we're gonna do three, I think that, the three is the-
So fifty-sixteen minute online version. Services and programs evenings.
We're starting with number three, materials standards.
Why did you check marks on that one, didn't you do that one?
My bookmark was starting at number four service.
I got it ourselves and I thought it was not in there, let's go. I had check marks on it, okay.
Like this, we're done, okay. All right, we'll start with that one.
We're doing a four thing.
Yeah, so it's page twenty-four on the printed and then page fifty-something.
Oh good, because five's a little careful.
Yeah, page fifty-six, thank you, on the printed, on the other time. Okay, so, how we do it?
We do great.
No, we, you know, we looked at our services and programming standards and, you know, we do provide services free of charge. It's so funny, anytime people come to ask about products, how much does it cost? Nothing, come on, it's the nicest thing to say. Uh, and we do open them up, you know, for all, we do not monitor, we do not control if people check out, we get free, 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 free. Uh, and we offer it obviously to patrons of all ages and all levels. Um, we also have trained staff members who offer the assistance, both technology and with all sorts of access. And as you see by the room report every month, the library does encourage and invite the community to make use of the library space. So that, that's one of our probably biggest pinch points and there's needs, it's more, more room for that social and the reading aspect of our community, so. Um, we do invite people to provide written feedback, we have a comment box, we have the email forums.
Did you find a comment box?
We've dedicated a lovely one. The comment box might have turned into the donation box at Promise Mark. But, yeah, we repurpose a lot of things. But either way, we do have the ability, plus we do do periodic surveys to the public, so, we do like feedback, yeah.
This references a formal survey to evaluate patron satisfaction, when was the last one done and what did that?
Uh, we did one, I believe, two years ago and it's time to do another form.
It was about fifteen, sixteen months, because I was here already.
Oh, so maybe, yeah.
So about fifteen or sixteen months ago.
And how do you do, what is that process like, how do you conduct that survey?
We, uh, we put a paper form for people, we love to just fill out a paper one, we put it online, find them, you know, obviously put a promotion about it. It's much feedbacks, most of it. And it's always interesting, because some of the questions are the same, but you're on purpose to see if you're reading or not.
Yeah.
And it's just funny how, oh, I never even knew you had, it's, oh, okay. We just enlighten you, so those are the types of things we then turn around and go, okay, let's send out a blast about this or a blast about that, or, so, it's very helpful. But some things that we think are very obvious aren't a lot sometimes, which is why it's very enlightening.
Just, um, as a point of reference, do we need to make the screen clearer for the recording when it is up there?
Teams, we can make her.
I'm just thinking about the minute up as the recording of it. Uh, no?
Is this still teams?
Yeah. I know what to tell you, we're on Zoom, but I don't know what to tell you on Teams.
If it's any small, it's just we're seeing that you're a smaller.
Yeah, but I, I think that's what's recording as well.
Maybe it's too-
Then be on the whole setting website.
Oh, that, yes.
Same.
Oh, we can all be in the chair together. This is why you can't let me play with this.
Because then we end up in chairs together.
Floating heads. Like the Wizard of Oz with the floaty head.
Yeah, but the ride, it just, they land, I don't know which one it is, where you're, where you're in the, the car and they-
Is it the Haunted Mansion?
Yeah. They superimpose one of the characters in your car.
Yeah.
The Haunted Library, woo.
No, it's okay, we can-
But Hoopla, they're just gonna have to deal with that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna be super popular.
You don't?
We could go viral.
Yeah, we could.
Well, that's what a library does.
Usually when you go viral, it's not for something good.
Yeah.
Those scenes were funny, I thought.
I think we should all be in the scenes together.
We are a board. All right, so we are now on to four point two programs, right?
Yes, and I, you know, this I feel a bit, you know, not do all, you know, but, you know, never hurts for a crush. We do obviously provide free education, educational programs, to all ages, would be very hard to get across the board.
Except that you stop at a hundred and one, I think that that's-
We have a secret knock for anybody above a hundred.
And you said this year, the reading program, some reading program had just about as many adults as kids.
I think it's fabulous.
Well, the adult prices are really good, so.
Everybody loves a good competition.
Yeah.
I don't care what you say, you love a good competition. And adults are, we are the, you know, read for pizza, for pizza age, so.
Yep.
And we, for pizza, yeah. Too bad we don't have pizza anymore. Yeah, so we've got the programs, we do early literacy programming, we do a lot of early literacy programming, which is nice. Um, we do get a specific grant from the state every year, Ready to Read Grant, and that goes specifically towards books.
What is baby story time?
They sing, they move, they crawl around on top of each other sometimes. Um, it's, it's fun to watch because the babies just have a great time, like just seeing each other and little people. But they do rhymes, they do a lot of lap sets, movements, and rhyme and clap and they don't actually do technical stories or something. Just a lot of listening and, you know, absorbing.
Yeah, I came the other day when people were gathering for that, I just thought, all the, all the babies seemed really looking forward to it.
When you think about it, if you're a baby, I mean, I scare the children all the time, so you see somebody your own size.
Right, right.
It's kind of nice to-
Yeah.
But it's funny to watch them when they're there, they just crawl towards each other and it's pretty funny. And then obviously, we, back to the feedback, we do like to have feedback on the stuff we offer and what else might be helpful and there are questions. Any other questions on the program and services? Now we have tech, tech's always the hard one because it crucially costs money, a lot of money. And it goes out and it's so fast. So we do do a lot of, we used to do more classes, but we're finding that the one-on-one is really what's needed because everybody has, there's just so much technology now and it's, everything's different, to hold a platform is almost impossible.
Yeah.
And so it's turned out that the one-on-one assistance is a better use of everyone's time and efforts.
Are there different staff members who do different sorts of things?
Um, sort of, I mean, there's sort of a group of about four that really take on most of the one-on-one assistance.
And are we doing things like the assistance in social media?
Uh, we've held Facebook classes before and, or a lot of one-on-one assistance is, yeah, how do I get my pictures from here to there? Or on here, or send to so-and-so, or, you know, upload them to Facebook and that kind of thing.
Well, I was here once at my favorite place in the Oregon section with that round table and I know that one of the reference libraries has been very, very helpful, where somebody didn't even know how to set up a Gmail account and went up on and all that stuff, so it was, it was lovely, you know, seeing that service.
And then obviously, we, we do the access to relevant digital content, we have databases, our websites, point people in different directions. And then we do have the office suite, so people can do some simple editing, simple refloating, some, you know, graphics and things like that.
Do we have anything that helps people with assistive technology here?
We have some assistive technology for them to be able to use, such as? Um, we have a keyboard with large print.
Okay.
We have an adaptive mouse that's not just a straight, it's shaped differently, for different hand positions. And then, if needed, we can turn on the, what it'll read to you.
So they could have it read to them through headphones or something like that, that's called. I, I suppose stuff is wheelchair accessible through-
The tables, yeah. And then we provide the copiers, obviously, and the printers and, which is one of my favorite features, it seems like. Because everybody's printers break.
Yeah.
And or the, it's ridiculous, so.
Oh, and you should buy a new printer anytime you run out of ink.
Uh, practically, yeah, yeah, so. We just updated, we had a black and white printer and a color printer over reference, we switched to a Xerox machine where we can copy and um, scan for faxes, and we can do it all in one spot instead of staff having to run to, send a replication.
So instead, it's more of a scale and, and-
That's helped a lot.
Yeah.
Um, because without fail, whoever wants to fax shows up with, person who wants to print and the person who wants to copy it, the person who wants to-
Yeah, so. People still fax.
Some things require, yeah, they will not take it any other way, it's amazing.
Mostly government agencies.
Yeah. And good luck finding a fax machine in this town now. It's harder and harder to do.
Yeah.
If we move on to digital contact, community needs, um, you know, we do provide other ways, other programs and things like that that specifically mentioned here, a lot of that we need for things like employment services. And then helping them get that resume that they built into the plat, whatever platform they're applying for. Some of them are not as easy as they should be, which is a shame.
Yeah. Well, business development too, or do you send that over to small business developments?
Well, for specific needs like that, we'll generally refer them out, unless it's, you know, a form we can print off or more, you know, things like that. But if it's more in-depth, we definitely send them to the more expert agents. Um, so a lot of this, we just outlined sort of what, what we have in, you know, for electronic and technology needs, uh, we are, as I'm sure many of you, going through the Windows eleven upgrade, fun. Um, so, yeah, we'll be replacing a few more of our computers that just aren't gonna make the best, so.
Unless you have a Mac.
Unless you have a Mac, then you run. But we do provide, and on our website, we have a lot of these things sort of separated out, so if somebody's looking for health information, we have it sort of bundled in one spot. Um, business dot bundled in one spot, geology stuff bundled in one spot, so people can go and do it, easier search. If you look at five point three, community and individual intelligence and access, um, you know, it just asks a lot, it asks a lot of questions on how we get your information about what technology to provide, you know, sidebar, you've got a map for that, which obviously we know technology is a big element, so we are trying to keep up on it. It's like running on a hamster wheel, though, never gonna get to the end. And we do, you know, work with some other community firms to see, and then have your federal grant taken. I'm, I'm too bitter about that. And then have your federal grant taken, but I'm, uh, I don't think too bad about that.
Any questions on any of that? Long as it's done.
We do the ones. We really do, that's what's, sort of, I guess, fun, if you get this, it's like, no one retired in that.
Yeah.
I need stuff that happens here.
Yeah.
So. And currently, we do use a contract company to, to maintain a lot of our stuff, so.
And how does that work out?
Ah, it's on the day.
Are they not as responsive as needed?
A lot of times, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, when you're one client instead of a new, dedicated IT person, definitely, there's, you know. That's a con, definitely, you don't have a lot of immediate handy, but then at the same time, they have sixteen people or something, and one might know the answer versus if you employ one person.
That's true, yeah, that's true.
Does that executive?
Yeah, and we do that as a count wide level, so.
So everybody's on the same.
So everybody's on the same, because we share so many systems, we all share the same ideas.
I was wondering why, when the city went over to their contractor, you say with.
That, yes, so takes care of the higher level for all of us.
And ESO again?
Instead, it's Service Office. That's one of the things that they do with the IT, and they move the materials, and some of those, uh, contracts, like for Libby, for instance. She has a contract for that.
That's the county level.
That's at the county level, yeah. Yeah, when the, when the tax money comes in, they shave off that top for ESO, it's for a lot of those accounting-wise expenses that everybody shares.
And you have five point four now?
Yeah, just if anybody, you know, to go over your single technology thing, we do a lot of it, we try to keep up, we totally have as many, as few barriers as possible. And, uh.
What is the technology plan exactly?
Well, we have, uh, both, it can include everything, what are we going to offer for our, uh, online databases to replacement calendar for the computers themselves? So get out of rotation so that they, in theory, don't put all.
So the technology plan needs to dovetail with the budget?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, so how does that work? You requested one from the IT team, but the IT team is a contract vendor, right? How does that work? How does the contract vendor work with someone who understands the power of a budget?
Well, what we do, yeah, they work with each library, and they give us an inventory of what we have, what age it is, and what, you know, like, for this Windows eleven update, for instance, I got a spreadsheet of. Ones that will move over and be fine, and the red ones that will not support it, and so we have to look at those and say, okay, maybe we need to cut. One, um, OPAC, one of the catalog computers maybe, for now, so that's the type, how we kind of work together on those things.
Yeah, it's in finance, this mean, they have two big Dell boxes in front of the desk, and that's what they said, was, yeah, these are replacing all those computers that aren't gonna support a Windows eleven.
Yep.
Yeah.
That came really fast.
It did, because, I mean, it was just last year that they were not supporting ten. And so people bought new computers with eleven, and now it's a year.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good times.
And so, um, community engagement is something that's already does very well, I think.
Yeah, and that's, um, you know, through our sort of ever-evolving strategic plan, and that was one of the things, it's more, um, community engagement and outreach. So that's something really good. Looking at new opportunities, Jenny just went to the hospital yesterday for their internal health check-in, which was great, because.
Really busy.
That was nice to reach out to those folks, uh, I was at the postcard welcoming event, um, last week. All the new families that come into town just do their first stint here, so that was fun, it was really nice at that event. So many of them say, oh, I already have another, because it's the first thing I do when I come into town, like. My work here is done.
I'm just here as a pretty face.
Exactly, I signed up, I think, six babies for, um, Doll Part Imagination Library, we gave out, I think, two or three cards, but everybody else, oh, yeah, I already got it, no problem.
That is great.
Yeah.
Yeah, our postcard, um, really supports the community, and, and we're here to be able to support them as well.
Yeah, it was a really fun event.
We were there as well.
Yes, I saw, we were three tables down.
Of course.
Your banners were.
Mothers are. Alright, um, I appreciate that you respond to community feedback within twenty-four business hours, that's nice.
Right, try our darkest, for sure. Well, what if you have responsive libraries, why? Challenges?
Three things.
That's basically, but.
Yeah.
Leaders that provides broad access to information about library services, opportunities, challenges, what do they consider a challenge? Well, just things like. Why would we flex them down? Because we all have, our funding cuts, um, new, our building challenge. Try making people aware of, we're not just cutting out X, Y, or Z because we're mean.
You know, right.
Four reasons, so.
Any other?
I'm gonna have to think, looking back through surveys to provide us with some of those challenges to address.
There's a link in the middle of that.
Yeah, I don't kind of, is that supposed to be there? No, I missed it in my editing.
I'm hoping PDF thing was a thing, I didn't know about.
PDF thing?
Yeah.
I thought it was a hyperlink dropped in the middle.
For an ODOT form.
Yeah, I think it was supposed to be highlighting.
Yes, highlight. I do a lot of PDFing.
Unfortunately, I do way too much PDFing.
But in the suburb, right?
Yeah. So as a library that's a part of a county and a city, are you allowed to advocate? You've got advocacy.
Yes. So, and advocate, that's why I go up usually to legislative day every year. And advocate, oh, I guess every two years, not for the year, uh, advocate for things like our ready-to-read money, that we, that all libraries get to support early literacy. We usually discuss that, we discuss any other bills, uh, that relate to libraries with our legislators, folk on that day, um. We, Oregon was able to pass a, um. Basically, you can't have book banning bill, essentially is what it, freedom to read, or. So that was part of our advocacy to get that passed, quite often, all of the public libraries also go in and advocate for school libraries too, because they don't.
They.
They, they can't, or they don't have, the, the people said neither, I mean, because they're busy in school, it's February, so. Uh, we quite often will carry that torch for them too.
And does the state association, the Oregon Library Association, release some of that, um, that advocacy as well?
Yeah, they have a lobbyist that works through all of it with us, and, and more than, than just a day, where we're there, they're constantly working on those things for us.
Great. And, uh, columns that periodically Jenny puts in the world, talking about the importance of libraries, you know. Girls are just gangbusters, and they think they're wonderful.
Yeah, somebody's reading them.
I know, it makes me happy, somebody's reading them. Besides Sammy, who always has to read them.
I think they're great.
We do, you know, we try to have staff involved in various professional organizations, which also allows for growth and, and new ideas.
How do we, uh, how do we answer the facility standards when we desperately need new buildings?
Well, the funny part about that is that it doesn't say, you know, you don't have to answer whether your building's vulnerable or not.
That's next month, Janice.
And that's funny, yes, maybe we'll have more insights after, maybe next week.
Yes.
The, the only one we kind of fail on is seven point three, and just if you have the facilities wrong, then fine, and. I mean, I guess some.
We have, we have.
I'm discussing orientation.
Personal name?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
But we can, yeah, we can, it's okay, hit the last little bit of it, um, next time if you want.
Uh, yeah, so, we have one additional bit of, of old business that really has to be divided now, and part of it is. Um, finding a way to create a board orientation project for, um, and probably, even though some of us have been on this board for a long time, we could probably use. That information as well, um, is, is that something you can put on, was there something specific you were hoping to glean?
Well, I just wanted to share that my experience, um. I, I, we didn't even do so much of introductions that first day, so, whatever, ever, not until, not until after Karen came, the first time we did introductions. So I intentionally didn't attend one in person, so that I could watch online, and then isolate everybody's picture, and Google them, and research who's, who was who. And what they did, and where they a board member, did they work for the library?
And how she knows your deepest, darkest secrets.
That was a lot of homework for.
Right, that is not as helpful as it should be.
Right, right, so I was thinking something like, like a library tour, and certainly, let's give our names, so we don't have a new board member attend a meeting for the first time. Um. And who we are, what we do. Right, who we are, what we do, do we work for the library, what's your job description, what's your day-to-day life, something like that would be, would be helpful.
Highlights from the handbook. So I didn't have to.
Right, right, I, I think it would also be helpful to have a document, um, that tells us annually, what are the board's responsibilities and when. So this is when we go over the budget, this is when we go over standards, this is, you know, and, so we know where have we been, where are we going, what are we doing now, just a snapshot. Of what we're supposed to accomplish as a board.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be, that would have been helpful for me if I first joined.
Regarding the budget, uh, when that actually was on the agenda, it was the only round that I just wasn't able to do, uh, my prep for the meeting. And all of a sudden, it was on the, you know, it was on the agenda, I know, so we went through it very quickly, and I'm like, whoa, what was that? So I think if I had gotten a big heads up, oh, gosh, we're gonna go through the budget this meeting, it would have been really helpful, and, um.
Maybe a budget cheat sheet, like what you're looking at.
Even that we were gonna work on it that month, it was certainly an agenda item, but I just hadn't done my prep that month, and I was, uh, surprised.
I think it, um, I, I feel like we do really important work here, I mean, so I have an all strategic plan meeting so far, and budget approval, and, but I sort of find out that's happening. When I get my packet, so it would be nice to have an annual, like, these are our goals for the year, and this is what we've accomplished, this is what's ahead of us. But I, I feel like that would be, I would, I would appreciate that information.
Speaking of which, it just popped into my head, we've got that joint work session, I think in October.
Right, and about to.
What is the date on that again, twenty eighth, isn't it?
Twenty.
Something, I, I guess it was twenty third, but.
Yeah. Joint work session. With the, uh, it's City Cubic, Cubic, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and what was.
I do have.
I have it.
Oh, I don't have a time, I just have it for all day.
Oh, right, yeah.
And it is here, or it's a?
It's City Hall.
It's City Hall.
Twenty eighth, I should have remembered what day it was.
Oh, I know somehow.
Lucky you.
Whoa.
Whoa. Yeah, I have that on my, on my calendar.
Was that, yes, twenty eighth, because that's Tuesday.
And what is the goal of that work session?
What's expected of us?
Yeah, yes.
That's Jacob, he's the one.
Uh, as I understand it, it's to get us all on the same page, to get the city and the board on the same page, um.
And was placed into the new building, or?
Uh, in relation to how to move forward. What, what is moving forward, what does that look like? Because, uh, you know, there was, at the budget of, and we had money that was for planning, potentially, and then. You know, it doesn't, you know, a lot of things are very nebulous, and we haven't, uh, as a council, locked in, or as a city, that steps forward. And so the goal is to bring everybody together, talk it out, see which, what are potential options.
That you can do that as well?
No, that's just a board and a city, and that's, um, that's why we're having this steering committee meeting prior to that, so that we can at least generate some ideas, have, have.
Okay.
You know, some, have a talk before that.
Alright, does that?
Yes.
So if we could maybe work on that, Sammy, I'm happy to, in any way I can, on this one.
I love the idea of the annual calendar, like, here's when we do this, here's when we do that, I think that would be incredibly helpful, yeah.
Yeah, and I think Jacob had, uh, suggested at our last meeting, that there'd be like a checklist for the orientation, and maybe you point dates on it, this is the date that you got your iPad, and this is, you know. Yeah, so a checklist, so that, um, you know, we make sure that all new members have done all the things.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, I'm starting with that, yeah, new member checklist.
Yeah, for, for the joint work session, is there something we should be doing to prepare for that? Cause I'm just going in cold, I feel like maybe there's something I should think about, or no, or study.
I don't have an agenda for that, maybe, so I'd love to get to that, but.
I can reach out to Nicole and see if there are any particular plans, uh, I haven't talked to Nicole about it in a while, so, uh, I will talk to her, and see what I can share out, and. And I'll share that to you guys when I have.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll have stuff from the steering committee, which also may generate some.
Right.
Thoughts and ideas, and, and that, I think so.
So, in addition to what you're suggesting, which I like for the new member, I, I don't think it would hurt to have something like a, a video. Of some kind, are you considering sitting on the board, to kind of know what you might be getting into?
We don't want to scare anybody.
So I don't know how many people apply for the positions, it's not very many, but just maybe you, maybe you find that you'd like to sit on it, but you don't really know what's going on, and. It's kind of a promotional video.
They do have the benefit of watching online now, and that's something.
Yeah, like you go online and watch reading.
Yeah.
Or attend personally.
Or attend, yeah, we have all these seats. People could sit in.
God, these chairs are comfortable.
And sitting in anyone's new one, yeah.
Yeah, I like.
I didn't mind, I didn't mind the, the ones.
Easier to.
So do we have any new business? Other than.
That was kind of new, but kind of old since some.
Uh, you know, um, I, I just looked across this piece of paper, I had printed out two, two things from the standards, and, uh, one of them was the Oregon State Library's square foot per capita average. And the other one was facility square foot per capita, I didn't really look at the details, but is that helpful for us in thinking about potential?
That is pretty, that's the way.
Okay.
When we were creating these standards, we put that in there, that was one of the biggest questions, is how do we know if we have an adequate library community? And it was very difficult information to come up with, because, you know, each community's different, obviously, funding, you know, everybody loves a bigger place usually.
So we need one square foot per person, we're upset with the city, so. So that would be sixteen thousand square feet?
No, because we have a bigger service area.
Oh, it's a service area.
Our service area, we serve about over twenty-six thousand feet, which is about what the size of this library is. And when we did studies before on what should the new facility be square footage-wise, we came up with the fact, one of the biggest needs was more meeting space. Not necessarily a bigger library-ish thing, but more meeting space, and make a better space of the square footage.
Yeah.
And have an L, you know, and have, have a better looking, you know, a more flexible L, and so. That was the conclusion, and I don't think that that has dramatically changed since we did that study.
The goal's roughly thirty thousand.
Roughly, yeah, which would add those, a couple more meeting rooms, basically, and expand, uh, to make a big one bigger, to hold more people, and then. Add in more, you know, small, a couple more small, so.
And having somewhere near a personnel so that, um, you know, just as an example, uh, the Northern Library. Um, they have drop-in for their smaller room and it's right there by the desk so they can see who's there and if it's, uh, you know, if it's empty or not. And that's not, not sure.
But at the same time, we also want them to be locked hours, so if they were buried in there, they can't be, so it's, that's the architect. That's, that's always a trick, yeah, because you don't want them isolated, but at the same time, you don't want them not to be able to be used. At different point in time, so yes.
I have one question, I get these um, messages that my iPad is not backed up, so. We need to ask the IT guy, I get that as well, or there's some updates.
I may have you all drop them off and we'll just, when I find out the time, they can come in and just clean them all up.
That sounds great.
Uh, a community member did approach me at another community event and said that, um, he had seen the posting for the ESO driver. And had applied and he was asking questions and I, you know, referred that to you guys, obviously. Uh, so is that, is there anything about the process of that application that's like posted somewhere?
The city posted, it's a city job, it's posted on the city website, but that's ESO's. Yeah, on the Friday update, yeah, on the Friday update, posted on the job site, I think she remember touched on it in Dean or.
And so that was, they have an HR person at the city. Our desk was empty the other day, so I was like.
We have, it was the day of leadership coos, she was with us all day.
But yes, she's still there.
Yes, she is.
Yes, I got emails from her today, she's still there.
Or, um, it sounds like Sammy, she's gonna reach out to you and you guys are gonna discuss some things they were. Uh, are needing on the twenty-eighth. Um, and I believe we have an October meeting before that. And so, um, the hope is that that will be hashed out with them, we'll be able to discuss it here and then we'll have the joint meeting. So that's as it stands currently, I know Nicole has had it next week, um, but it sounds like we'll have some. Uh, ready rock and roll, and then there'll be after the steering committee as well, so we'll have more to talk about.
So many ideas flying through your hair.
But it's good, I think that there are several board members on steering committee, there's several board members on the foundation, so we are making sure that we are. Um, keeping in touch with what's happening.
Everybody else steps backwards, right?
Yeah, yeah, right, I was standing up and I didn't notice that it passed back when they said, who wants to do it? Um, so if there's no other business, any.